Good evening, welcome to the City Council Meeting of Wednesday, November 4th, 2015. Can I have the rule call, please?
Alan Derby.
President.
Dan Hagan.
President.
Jennifer Hayes.
Yeah.
JP Kuzinski.
Yeah.
Joe McCoy.
Here.
Dan Rist.
Here.
Tamara Smith.
Yeah.
Joy Winnie.
Yeah.
Nathan Ziegler.
We all please stay after the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to our United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under our own individual liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Motion for the approval of the minutes on October 21st.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion of second, approval of the minutes on October 21st. Any discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Don't see any. Okay. Public speak time. If anyone here from the public who would like to address the council for something other than what's on the public hearing, please come to the podium, state your name. Address. Not seeing any. Okay, we can move right into communications from elected boards and officials. That's what this is.
No, I do not.
Okay. We are communications.
Well, there's a six. Retirement board.
Oh, I'm sorry, communications, I missed that. I have nothing under rules, but I do have something under communication. We've received requests from the retirement board, and I believe it should be sent to committee for consideration. It is board member stipends. Do you want this, Steve?
Okay.
I'll make a motion that we send this to finance committee for review.
Second. I've got a motion of second to move the retirement board, means we'll offer compensation to finance for review. Any additional comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion passes. So I guess that covers communications then.
Yes.
Mayor Communications, Mayor Kadra. No, okay, nothing there. Moving on to rules and committees. Rules and government relations, Councilor.
Mr. President, I have no report, thank you.
Okay, finance, Councilor Hagan.
Finance will have four public hearings this evening. Most, I believe all of them are involving the Public Works Department. We're still waiting for info on the kennel donation account. We're also going to take up the class, tax classification tonight in a public hearing. Our next meeting will be next Thursday, the 12th, at 6:00 PM. And at this time, I would like to set four public hearings. I would like to set, and I'll do it all in Form 1 motion, I'd like to set the following four public hearings. One for our next meeting, which will be the 18th. And that would be for $18,000 to purchase protective clothing for the fire department, $50,000 for the True Heart Drive Adams Street pump station improvements, $50,000 for replacement water meters, and $150,000 from free cash to cap, capital stabilization.
Second. Okay, a motion of second to move for, set public hearings for November 18th on the previously read supplemental appropriations. Additional comments or discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion passes.
There is a couple of new items which I could take up later. There is one, though, that I'm not sure, because I know Council Derby may have to leave earlier. Does the pay classification plan, does that go to ordinance or does that go to?
We usually deal with it.
Finance.
Because it's the same thing.
I'll deal with that then in new business. I just didn't want, if Council Derby wanted to give his opportunity.
Okay, you can have it. Okay, that concludes. Public safety, Councilor Hayes.
Thank you, Mr. President. I didn't get a chance to jump in earlier, but I did want to thank Barbara and her team at the City Clerk for running a great election yesterday, and congratulate everybody who won. We are continuing our review of the street acceptance protocol, and the two utility courts are being taken care of at a public hearing this evening. And our next meeting is November 12th at 5:00 PM on a Thursday.
Okay.
This concludes.
Okay, appointments, Councilor Winnie.
Thank you. We met tonight, and we reviewed nine appointments that the mayor has sent forth to us. The first eight appointments that I'm going to make the motion on are individuals that were serving on the ECA Plus Committee, but were serving on the subcommittee of the Grants Committee. And at our last meeting, we made the ECA Plus Grant Committee, and we made that as its own committee. So these eight appointments are the people that were already serving in the subdivision of the Grants and ECA Plus, but now are going to be brought over into its own committee of the ECA Plus Grant Committee. So I'm gonna, we voted in Subcommittee 3 to 0 to go forward with these. So if there's no other, if there's any, not any questions, I will go forth to make that into a motion.
Second. Well, they have different expiration terms.
Let me, yeah, I have to read each of them.
Sorry.
So that's all right. So I make the motion that we appoint Andrea Marks to ECA Plus Grant Committee with the expiration date of 11/19/18. Kristy Crutchfield, ECA Plus Grant Committee, 10/23/16. Megan Murphy, ECA Plus Grant Committee, 8/9/16. Artilia Court, ECA Plus Grant Committee, 11/1/18. Aaron Levin, ECA Plus Grant Committee, 18/17. Chris Korzek, ECA Plus Grant Committee, 5/19/17. Marjorie Zeig, ECA Plus Grant Committee, 10/1/18. And Teresa Lorenko, ECA Plus Grant Committee, 10/1/18. Make the motion that we move them all forward.
Second.
Thank you.
Okay, a motion of second for the just previously read ECA Grant Committee nominees. Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion passes.
Thank you. The ninth appointment is for Dale Doron to the School Building Committee. Dale Doron is our new business manager, and under the MBSA rules and laws, if we have the position of a business manager, they must be appointed to the School Building Committee. So we moved forward 3 to 0 to make the motion to the full council that we appoint Dale Doron to the School Building Committee with the expiration date of 12/31/2017. And I'll make that in the form of a motion.
Second.
Okay, a motion of second, any additional discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion passes.
Thank you. Our next meeting for the 38 appointments, reappointments that the mayor has given us, will be held on November 18th at 5:15 in Downstairs Romaine. So, and I think that's it for my report for tonight.
Great, thank you.
Would, I'm sorry, would you like me to move the 38 appointments?
We have to come back anyway for finance, so we'll come back and grab them all at the end, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Ordinance, Councilor Derby.
Thank you, Mr. President. The ordinance subcommittee met on Wednesday, the 28th of October, where we finished up our work on the zoning, which we have in public hearing tonight. And we also took another look, as requested, at the overquoted licenses. We also gathered information to look at the possibility of a food truck ordinance. And that concludes.
Okay, thank you. Council Derby, are you on property as well? I mean, do you want to say, there's no report for?
No report this evening.
Thank you. Old business pending, and I thought as we were still working on the boardwalk, we're still accumulating names, but we have not forget, forgotten that, that will continue. We have some time, so why don't we go on to new business? Council Winnie?
Yes, I move that the 38 mayoral appointments be sent down to Appointment Subcommittee for Review.
Second. Okay, a motion of second to move the 38 mayoral appointments to Appointment Subcommittee. Additional comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion passes.
Thank you.
City ordinance amendment, is that a finance?
I believe it's finance.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that we move the city ordinance amendment for, to amend the classification and pay plan Exhibit B to finance for review.
Second. Okay, a motion of second to move the classification and pay plan Exhibit B to finance. Any additional questions, comments? Those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion passes.
And then I have three new supplemental appropriations, which I'll do a first reading on. The first is dated October 29th, 2015. Request is hereby made for approval of the following appropriation. The amount requested is $16,000 to be appropriated from free cash, and that amount appropriated to the salaries. And that would be in relationship to the pay plan request. The second one is a supplemental appropriation of October 29th. Request is hereby made for the following appropriation. The amount requested is $42,692 to be appropriated from free cash and appropriated to the Police Department capital. The amount requested be used for the following purpose, to provide funds to purchase a fully marked line cruiser to replace a 2009 Ford Crown Victoria. And the third supplemental appropriation request, also dated October 29th, 2015. Request is hereby made for the following appropriation. The amount requested $76,000 to be appropriated from free cash and appropriated to the Fire Department capital, and that amount, and the amount requested be used for the following purpose, to provide funds for the purchase of a Chevy Traverse SUV to replace the 2008 Ford Taurus recently totaled in a vehicle collision, and also to fund the purchase of a Chevy Traverse to replace the 2008 Expedition currently taken off the road. And I'll make all three of those supplemental appropriations in the form of a motion to send to finance.
Second. Okay, we have a motion of second to move the three previously read supplemental appropriations to finance. Any additional comments or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion passes. Okay, unfortunately, it looks like we still have about three more minutes, so I will call for a three-minute recess.
I will entertain a motion to open public hearings.
So moved.
Is there a second? Okay, a motion of second to open public hearings. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. We're gonna go a little bit out of order in case anyone there has the actual agenda for time constraints, so we're gonna start with the overquoted liquor license, and then go to the zoning map amendments, so those are both, Councilor Derby.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, like I said, we did meet, it was requested by the council to revise the ratio of full licenses to beer and wine, or malt and wine. It was the mayor and the finance director were both in attendance, and on counsel from them both, the committee decided to amend the request for eight full, in the idea that the five beer and wine holders might be interested in a full, and then those beer and wine would come back to the city. And so that's where we're at.
Okay. And then, let's see if I want to, do you want to wait till after a motion is made? Do you want to get into the discussion now? Because usually we ask the public and stuff, I don't know, you want to start right in?
Yeah, I wanted to say a couple of things because, two things in particular. I made an error last time we were talking about this, because it was just kind of new that a full liquor license could just be laid on top of a brewery pour license, but I did a lot of research into it, and it has to be a separate company. So that's actually not really something that can happen, as far as somebody upgrading their licenses. If you have a farmer's pour license, you cannot upgrade it into a full liquor license as easily as I had initially thought. And then, secondly, I spoke to the State Ethics Committee about a few things today, and I am going to recuse myself from this vote, because I bartend, I work for a bar owner currently, and I also do restaurant consulting, so I have employers that, from my past, my present, and probably future, that would be involved in any of these liquor licenses. And I just feel uncomfortable having to, I mean, of course, I have an opinion on this, but I don't feel that it's proper for me to vote. I don't think that would be the right thing for me to do. So, I just wanted to let everybody know.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
So, this is where we, I guess we can start first, we usually do with any city officials. Mayor Kadra, would you mind, do you want to summarize, because I know you previously were on the licensing, the secretary, do you want to make any comments? I know we changed numbers a little bit, do you want to talk about some of the rationale? Or maybe in combination with Council Derby? Because I was there, obviously, I was there for part of the discussion, but I thought it might be worthwhile.
Thank you. I'd be happy to answer any questions that the counselor has, but I think one of the, one of the things that came up during the discussion is that the all alcohol restaurant license are the ones that are highly sought after. And in the past, when one does become available, usually the wine and malt restaurant licenses, you know, usually tend to upgrade. And also, the discussion was had, that, another thing that came up was mention of bars. I think you, all the counselors have a list of the licenses in front of you, so you'll notice that they're, they're not under the, under the category bars, they're under the categories of restaurants, and then there's a few general on premises. So even though they, they are not required to sell food, they, they could. For instance, for instance, just using a quick example, the Brass Cat, they have a restaurant, an all alcohol restaurant license, so if they wanted to sell food, then they would also obviously need to contact the Board of Health. But they don't have a bar license. So just a couple of different things that came up. Counselor Derby, I don't know if there was any other, any other things that, that, you know, came up or questions? And I think it is also interesting that, at this point, on the all alcohol licenses, we're allowed 17 for the state quota, which just increased when we went over the, you know, the census. Yes, when we went over the 16th, just barely over the 16,000, we were like six shy for many years. And the state census usually, I mean, the federal census comes out every 10 years. So we presently have six legislative changes that have come to the counselors, you know, one by one, and, and some of them, in the past, have taken up to a year to, you know, to go through the process. So it can be a lengthy process.
Okay. Thank you. Is anyone question, Councilor?
I'd some take a long time, and I, for one, would certainly not like to see people wait a long time to invest in our community. But there also is a proper consideration of matters, so my question is, how quickly was the fastest one, the most prepared person with the best counsel, with the mayor, and maybe some other counselors involved, that could lead the way, kind of usher this through? How quickly?
Okay, so as, as you know, when somebody wants to obtain an out-of-quota license, they, you know, contact the licensing board, attend one of their meetings, and it, a vote is taken at that point to endorse their request. Also, the mayor is in favor of it, and then it goes to the council, where it is presented. So you have, you have to have a representative, which is typically, has been in the past, Representative John Seibach, and it really depends on if they're in session, so, you know, when it hits the floor. Now, after it's all approved and comes back as a legislative change in a bill, then the process begins, where they then need to apply for the license, in front of the licensing board. Once it hits the licensing board at a public hearing, typically, it's a two-month process before it is approved by the state. So it requires the local approval at the public hearing, and then the next day, all the paperwork goes out to the ABCC in Boston, and that typically can take up to, two months is a good estimation. And the application process itself is usually a month before the meeting, so a typical license is three months when, at, at the application stage, when it is available to be applied for.
Second. My understanding, too, what tends to be the slower spot is, because not only the House, I believe it goes to the Senate, and then it goes to the governor.
That's right.
And I think it even goes to the licensing board, or the whatever the subcommittee is at the State House. So that's, so theoretically, if we have these proactively, we could theoretically shorten the time period to about two months if we, if we had skipped through the legislative board ahead of head.
Exactly.
Again, as if that goes as it is approved.
And again, and one of them did one process, one of the original ones was at the beginning, it did take a year to get the legislative approval.
Before the [inaudible]. Council Rist?
Just for either sale of or mayor, as I understand it then, and I'm a little confused, these new overquoted licenses, we would approve them, you would approve them, so that's one step taken out of the process. Does the state approve these new licenses, or do they still have to approve them one by one as the liquor license board sends them?
They would approve.
They just go right to the state, they don't have to go through us?
Right, no. What, they would not go back to the city council, the, after the city council has, you know, successfully went through the state process, where the state gives us the legislation that would allow us to, say, have over, in the past, we've only done one at a time, but in this instance, say you decided eight. It comes back saying that we, the city can award over eight with the restrictions that are based on it, which, as you know, stays on that property. Then, they have to go individually before the licensing board.
And they have to go back to the state?
And then, every, every liquor license is approved locally, then to the Alcohol Beverage Control Commission, which is the state, which is the state authority.
But we don't have to send them. We're skipping a major part of the, by doing this and sending it to the state.
You're having that, you're having that.
We are abbreviating the process, because now the state legislature is gonna approve all eight of these, and then it becomes local control. It still has to go ABCC, we understand that.
That's right.
But I wanted the people to know that we feel comfortable that our licensing board is properly reviewing these, at least I do, and that there is still a lot of local review over this.
Oh, yes.
We're not giving that up. We're taking a, what I would call a bureaucratic step out of it.
That's right.
To allow businesses to come into the city, if they need a liquor license, they can get one, and it doesn't take a year.
That's right.
It might take six months, but not a year. But it may be even less, because now, we know how long the state legislature acts, this will take a lot less time. This is good, I wasn't sure of that.
Right, so you're, so what you're saying, in summary, is technically, you're eliminating the lengthy step at the beginning, and these would be available for someone to apply, and that process typically takes two months.
Right, so we're taking that out of the equation.
It's a huge step, by having it, you know, prepared.
And the other, Councilor Kuzinski?
I was wondering, Mayor Kadra, if you could speak to the parameters that you've heard as you, when you were at the meetings, for the review process, and what, what kind of review can happen? Can you refuse the license for variety of purposes, for any purposes? Talk to me about.
Sure.
How arbitrary can it be?
Sure.
How, how formal, is the process, at how many times during your experience, was it, was it rejected?
It's a very formal process, and it's set by the state. It's a state, a state regulated process. So if these were available, and you wanted to open a new business, and you're going before the licensing board, the application itself is online by the Alcohol Beverage Control Commission, has to be filled out online, printed in with a whole checklist, everything that's required by the state. And then it comes to the licensing, it comes to the licensing board for their review at a public hearing, where abutters are notified, all, and again, all of these are the state guidelines. And it is very specific reasons that you can, that you can deny, you cannot deny a license based on competition. You can, you know, deny a license for very, very strict reasons, and if the license were denied, the appeal process is to the state and can be overturned.
The other question, Councilor Hagan?
Mayor, maybe I misunderstood, maybe I didn't, I don't know if it was yourself or Councilor Derby, but why, why are we assuming that the people that have a beer and wine would necessarily go to a full? I mean, some of these are long-established restaurants, mainly pizza-type places, that beer and wine seems to maybe fit, and maybe they wouldn't want it. I mean, I wouldn't necessarily jump to the conclusion all of them would necessarily want to go full, but I guess, what was the assumption here?
I don't think anybody's jumping to any conclusions, I think that's been past history. One of the, all, you'll notice there is a pizza shop in here that had a beer and wine, and when one became available, which was auctioned off by the DOR, they upgraded to the all alcohol. So they're just very highly sought after. You know, again, we, without even knowing, you know, of, you know, one establishment that, that has wanted an all alcohol for a long time, and, you know, the process can be lengthy and burdensome. So, you know, just based on, and we, we get calls in our office, "Do you have any available?" Because Nikki, my assistant, is the new clerk to the licensing board, and she cannot accept an application, because we don't have any available. So once the quota is, is complete, you cannot even accept an application. So we get calls all the time, "Do you have any available?", "Do you have any available?", that type of thing.
Any questions for the mayor before she says? No, okay, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
If there's anyone else from the city, I'll give the city the fir, I'm sorry, just the city at the first, any city officials who would like to speak to her before I move on to the public? Okay, gentlemen, if you could just come to the podium, state your name, and address for the record, that'd be.
I'm Al Zegba. We own Ferry Street Package Store in East Stanton, and I realize that the package stores are not licenses that are for grabs, but I am concerned, but I think the city is aggressive when they're looking for eight additional licenses, whether it be beer and wine, or all alcohol at the restaurants. I think that what happens here is that most, unless we come up with a policy where if you're gonna give these licenses to established businesses is one thing, but to give them to a brand-new restaurant that has not been established, has not had any experience, most of these restaurants have a two-year limit, where they survive and they're gone within two years. So that means, now you issue me a license, in two years, I'm gone, but I hold a license to the restaurant. I can put it for sale, I can do whatever I want, it's my license. Unless the licensing board will put stipulations on, and from reading some of this here, I see that there probably are gonna be some stipulations, and I think that's where we should look at. I think there's a lot of restaurants and buyers that paid a lot of money for an all-alcohol license, and to be issued one, say, for $1,500 from this licensing board, because you are looking for eight licenses, these other people that have been in business and are established paid 40,000 or 50,000, they're getting hurt. So you're throwing out eight licenses out there, within two years, if they go defunct, I own this license. That's better, that's, you're giving me better interest than any bank is, because the license is worth money. And I think that somewhere along the line, you, we should, I understand about developing, but we also should look at protecting the established businesses. And if there's gonna be a criteria, maybe if, when you're issuing some of these licenses, restaurants that have already prior been into business, and have been here for a while, should be considered first. And I'm not against somebody wanting to start up a new business, but I'm thinking that, you know, somewhere along the line, as City of East Stanton, we're pretty aggressive, looking for eight different, eight different licenses, and I hope we're not forgetting the people that have been in business. I understand it doesn't affect us, because we're a family-run place, and there's only, we own a liquor package store, but I also own the restaurant and bar. And I know what it's like on the other end, I've been at both ends of this spectrum. And just to be gift-given a gift, I think is wrong. I think that if you want to consider how the applications are I think that if you want to consider how the applications are going to be filed, and what, and somebody has been established, is one thing. But as a brand-new restaurant that, because you want to develop a certain part of town, and John Smith comes down and says, "Oh, I want to put up a restaurant here, but I've never been in business", most of them don't survive two years. And that's like 80% of the restaurants that start don't make it within two years. After two years, is one thing. But, you know, you're, you're looking at some of these places, they're, they don't own the places, they got to pay rent. The, the cost of operations is fabulous in a restaurant, a lot of people don't realize this. But if between unemployment, the wages, and the cost of oper-, electricity, there's a lot of money involved. And I think that as the board, when you look at these things, you consider the application very, very carefully.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
You know, I just, this, no, you can sit, no, I'm just, because I know this has come up before, there, there are a couple of points I think are often misunderstood. One, is that these not are exactly the same as a regular liquor license, that that liquor license, a restaurant person has bought, has, has been actually received under, underneath the quota, is completely transferable. So there is a whole lot more flexibility to that license than the licenses we are talking at, are talking about now. But the thing that I, I always feel that I really need to speak, that a lot of businesses act as if the city charged them $40,000, or the city charged them $20,000. When they receive their license, that was completely free. It was a business speculation on their part, that this is now worth something, and I can sell it, and I can use it as capital, and I can use it, and, and, and the system sort of, you know, supported that. But there was never the city or the state ever, ever, ever charged for those licenses, those were always a private sector negotiation for what they thought the value would be. And so, it needs to be clear that those values that are attached to some of those licenses are not anything that was attached to them by either the city or the state, those are privately negotiated, speculated values of what that license would bring, you know, and, and like sometimes happens in business, some speculations work, and occasionally some speculations, the bottom falls out. And then when this works, when we're trying to promote business, sometimes there may feel like this bottom is falling out, but again, I try to make it clear that this was not charged by the city or the state. Anyway, is there anyone else here from the public? Oh, I'm sorry, sale due one minute?
Casey, you can go. I can talk while Casey's walking, I, I just wanted to respond to the, the transferability, and if someone went bankrupt after, it would go, the, the license would go back to the licensing commission, and it could be reissued to the exact same spot, but nowhere else.
But does not, that does not stay with that owner?
Does not stay with the owner, so they would not own it whatsoever.
Can't be sold.
Right. Mr. Douglas, thank you.
John, Casey Douglas, 18 Clifford Street. I want to thank the city for allowing me to get one of these over quota licenses for a new business that was not established. I did have a license previously at the Eastworks, and I went there because there was an existing license. He basically had the opportunity to get a tenant because of the license. That's why I ended up there. So, in hindsight, perhaps I would have been someplace else if I could have gotten a license from the city. So I think that's a great idea to get these licenses. I, gone before the Senate to get the, my individual license, there were 12 different applications that day, they let us all speak, they didn't answer any of it to the end, they approved all of them. And there were other people getting multiple license, other towns getting multiple license. So I think this is a good business plan for the city. I think the value of the licenses that some of us have paid for, unfortunately, have lost a lot of their value. I paid $35,000 for my license, I sold the contents of my business at the Eastworks and the license to Mr. Bundy for $30,000. I made my money during the time that the business was open, it was a cost of doing business at the time. And thank goodness we're not like North Hampton, where it's big dollars and there's a lot at stake. Now, it's just, you know what, you got a license, you got a business, you got an opportunity to run a business. Was the art bar successful? No, it wasn't, you know? Does it mean more people are going to come to the city? Probably not. I had four people at my bar when I came here. So it's not like we're going to have this plethora of people coming to town, it just gives us more opportunity for more businesses to open up. A new mill, the, a mill was recently purchased and is being remodeled, there's an opportunity there. The success that's happened at New City, and at Abanning Brewing, and the money that's spent behind those mills is great. So I think the, people need to understand, the local licensing board is very thorough, you know, talking about the license before, Tradens did not renew his license, and at the time, the city would have kept that license, even though it was an over quota license, for that location. So I think the licensing board does a very good job, and for you guys to approve this really saves a lot of time. It took me over a year to get my license, but it was fine, I took almost two years to do the buildup, and most businesses will take time to do their buildup. But it's the starting point. Smokey Bear has had their, his over quota license for a long time, because that was the very first thing he had to do to ensure that he could open up that business. Without that license, he wouldn't have spent a dime. Well, once he went through that process and got the license, then he started to spend the money, ran out of money, but, you know, but it's, so it's that thing that, that, you know, you, on your part, you're not going to be responsible for anything, the licensing board's going to figure that stuff out. So you guys just get it through, and it'll all be fine. Thanks.
Anyone else from the public? Say, I'm sorry, just state your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, my name's Michael LaValle, One Love Field Way, 20 years bar owner, Nebraska. I have a couple of questions, eight licenses, is there a provision that they only go to new business?
Uh-uh.
We can't do that.
Well, if eight new licenses, my supposition would be that they're going to go to existing businesses. These are going to be, if they're existing, they're going to be ready to do this. They're not going to have to get a business plan together, and all the other things you have to do to even start a business, they already exist. So if they go to licensing board and say, "I want one of those licenses", and there's going to be no reason for them to tell them no. I don't think it'll increase business. There'll just be the, more businesses with full liquor licenses. And obviously, four with a beer and wine who didn't have it, so net gain of four licenses.
Did you want to respond to that? I mean, I think we, one of the things we were talking about was that, that beer and wine upgrades, that beer and wine is now available for another business. So there does, it does fluctuate, it does move another license that would be available.
All right, well, my thinking on this would be like, to track new businesses, they're going to be at a disadvantage, because an existing business is certainly going to have all, everything in order to do this, and they know how to do it, especially if they already have a liquor license. And I think they'll just be all used up before anybody gets a new business going, even the financing to do such a thing. That's my take on it. So I think it, it wouldn't increase business in town at all. That's my take on it.
So I can speak a little bit to, right now, there's five beer and wine, so even if saying that all five of them wanted to upgrade, there would still be three additional licenses available. And then those five beer and wine would come back to the city. And I imagine that, you know, for example, if La Casita Azteca wanted to be able to serve margaritas, you know, that might change the, the business a little bit, it might be more attractive. So it would, if we're supporting local business, I have no problem with that. And if we can draw on new business, I think that's great, too.
Is there anyone else from the public? If you could just state your, your name and address for the record, please.
Come on, the other will be one of them.
I guess you can speak one at a time, anyway.
Okay, well, I'll just say hello first. I'm Stevlinsky, I'm a relatively new resident in East Hampton, I live on River Valley Way. And I have served on the executive board of the East Hampton Healthy Youth Coalition. I know some other members, I think member, Councilor Ferry is familiar with the coalition in other communities. And I also said on the policy subcommittee, I mentioned last week when I came before the subcommittee, that the whole item was a relatively, you know, new one, in our respect, just learned of it last week, and I don't think we were present at the last time the entire council took it up. So you have to bear with us, because I think we're like in catch-up mode to some extent. There are a couple of points we would like to make, and, one, from the outset, and folks who are familiar with the coalition know that the whole idea of the coalition from the very beginning was to, you know, embrace a very forward-looking and positive approach to promote safe and healthy environments for families in a, in a city that is becoming increasingly vibrant and growing. So keeping that positive flow is very important, and since if I understand what this is about, which is a home rule petition to the legislature, it would be nice for the community to be united together in that, because when it's not, it becomes a little bit more problematic, as you know. So to that end, this is, this is actually an opportune time. Ruth Ever, who's the executive director of the coalition is here as well, and we see this opportunity because apparently a year or so ago, that the licensing board was presented with some model regulations that, that have been used in other communities to kind of govern this area. And as best as I know, I don't think the board has taken those up yet. But since this is an opportunity to, looking at the city's program, this might be a chance to look at those regulations and see if they can be enacted or acted on. While this is pending, I think we'll probably make a more positive approach to the state legislature as part of the home rule petition. We have copies, Ruth, if you want to give the members, if you haven't had an opportunity to see or hear of them, and you may not have.
Yeah, I don't think we, if they form the licensing board.
Yeah, they would not have really come to you, so. I mean, each community perhaps does this a little differently, you, you know, that could be adopted as part of ordinance as well, I don't know why they, but they could also be treated as purely regulatory, and go before the appropriate regulatory board. It would be the choice. But in any event, we wanted to make sure that at least the council was aware of these, and, and.
One of them wasn't stable.
The top one wasn't stable.
That's stable.
Yes. One, four, one.
Stable.
If, if I could summarize, there are about four things that these regulations do for major things.
I would like, I, I'd like to narrow it a little bit, because the public hearing is strictly to addressing these liquor licenses. Are you talking, are you, are you going to ask about what is a good policy in general, or are these directly addressing?
Well, to the extent that it relates that, as I said, that, you know, where these have been pending, I, I, this is not about taking action on any regulations this evening, and I understand that, I don't want to expand the purview. I just want to make sure the council was aware that these were pending as you prepared to take action on the item list before you. That's, that's all, and I kind of agree to. But if you want to know in a nutshell what they kind of do.
Yeah, that'd be great, yeah, yeah.
That's what I would suggest.
Briefly, yes.
Yeah, four things. First is that the, it allows the police department to serve as agents for the licensing board. As you know, boards can delegate and designate individuals, so this would require the police departments, which I think most communities tend to do, and I think it's, for any number of reasons, a good idea to do. It is, it establishes guidelines for addressing violations of the regulations, so that businesses who know, you know, what, what is expected of them in that regard, and what might be a potential outcome if, if the regulations were violated. It also provides for the, for the granting of special licenses, and extension of certain licenses, for instance, to outdoor areas. Some restaurants have, have areas, in fact, there was one that was mentioned earlier that has one right out in the street, and this enables that to have guidelines to set for that. And finally, and probably most importantly, it sets requirements for the training of employees, which are generally well-adopted, but as best as I know, do not exist in anything, in any kind of formal form within the city right now. We're talking about tips, as an example. So it's not a bad idea for somewhere in the city, by regulation or by ordinance, to establish, you know, the tip requirements. And, and actually, if you, when you look, have a chance to look at the regs, you'll see that there are protocols that are also addressed, that, that go into protocols for management of the premises as well. But those are the four general things that are covered. Ruth, did you want to?
So I'm Ruth Ever from the East Hampton Healthy Youth Coalition, I just want to make the connection that the reason we're concerned about this is just because, you know, data shows, and the research shows nationally, that when you increase the number of alcohol outlets, you increase the risk of youth either perceiving easy access or getting easier access. And so our concern is not to come out against or for, you know, whether, I mean, we, we want to be able to partner with the city, we support a vibrant downtown, we understand the reasons why you're doing this, we just want to make sure that there's thoughtful engagement and, and looking at how is this going to impact our youth, and let's just make sure that we're thinking well about protecting them and doing what we can around that. And we feel that these regulations through the licensing commission could really address a lot of that, and so if there's any action that city council can take to ensure that that happens at the same time, if you are going to increase by this many outlets, that you also then say, "And let's make sure that we're doing everything we can to not make this any easier for our young people to get access to alcohol." We already have over 50% of our kids perceiving and saying that it's easy or very easy for them to get alcohol in East Hampton. Now, most of that is from social sources, it's not, and I'm happy to say that it's mostly not from our establishments, we mostly have, you know, businesses that understand and support the idea of not selling to minors, but we want to ensure that that stays in place. So these are the kind of things that will help, you know, by partnering these together, you're, you're taking a stand to also be continuing to support the youth in the city and protecting them.
Well, thank you, because I, personally, I will just, I will check on where the status of it is in the licensing board agenda, as I think that should be addressed. But that's really terrific information, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Okay.
Ruth, I know you work with the schools, aside from making it, and again, I'm for a vibrant thing, what message do you think the city council is going to send the youth by, by having eight licenses?
Well, that's my opinion, it's like, you know, I can't.
That's why I'm asking you.
Yeah, I mean, you know, until we survey the youth or ask them directly, I mean, it might be worth asking some of the youth in the community what they think about this, or how they're perceiving this. You know, eight is exponentially increases the number that you have in a community, it decreases the percent of how many people, population, per outlet you have in a community, and so it's, you know, it's, it's not the trend you'd want to see from the perspective of a coalition trying to protect youth. I, I don't feel like I can really speak to how the youth are perceiving it, I, there's a risk involved with how it's, the kind of message it's sending, but I'm also hearing that you're talking about family-friendly establishments, you're not talking about bars and package stores, which have a different feel in a community, so having another Amy's or a diner, or, you know, a Nene's kind of place, I think, you know, I think we need to be reasonable about, like, that's, doesn't feel to me like it's saying, "Yeah, we're having, you know, this is all about drinking in our town, this is the town where people go to drink." I don't think that's the kind of message that comes across. But, you know, it, it is sending a certain message to, to young people, saying, "For us to be successful, we have to have more alcohol in our community." So I think things like he was talking about, Steven was talking about, how you have outdoor seating, and how easily visible and accessible the alcohol is, can have a big impact on the perception of where it is and how visible it is in the community. So having strong ordinance regulations in place can do a lot to mitigate that feel.
Okay. Counselor Derby?
Ruth?
Hi.
So I just wanted to draw a distinction, and I think it's an important one to make. As far as, as a high school teacher, and as someone who has high school-age kids, you know, I would, I would certainly not want to do anything to try, try to encourage our youth to engage in unhealthy habits. But I would say that there, there is a difference between alcohol that is, is bought for on-premise consumption, and alcohol that is bought at a package store where it can be disseminated in a different way. And so I just want, and these are all for on-premise consumption.
Right, and that's my understanding.
So I just want to make that distinction and have that acknowledged, is that, would you agree?
Absolutely, yes. Now, that's the point I was making as well, that I think it does send a different message, and that the concerns that people have usually in, in settings where there's a, a lot of stores on every corner kind of thing, is that sends a different message and makes the access points and the risk of kids being able to get access more likely, and that's not what you're talking about. So I, yeah, absolutely acknowledge that.
Okay, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Make it, because I think we're a little bit off track here as far as, I think it's a great conversation.
Well, I was going to try to bring it back on track.
Okay, great, great.
Because you had talked about restaurants, and Amy's, and Nene's, and a few other places that might have, be serving alcohol with a meal. As far as I know, the, our, what we have before us does not have any provisions restricting the licenses to restaurants. Were you aware of that?
Yeah.
Counselor Derby?
And what, did you have an opinion about that, like to go on directly on the record about?
You asked about your, in fact, how kids, I'm not going to speak about that, but as an adult, I think that there is a difference, in my view, about an establishment that is serving, you know, food, and, and, and I think that's a different thing than an all-alcohol food environment. And I did appreciate that. And I did appreciate that there was that restriction. So I do think personally, and probably certainly for the data that we have, if we go that direction, better it be for the, you know, with a food, in a food-serving environment than not.
Thank you very much.
So, just a little clarification. When we did, we did discuss that, and we were thinking of, you know, not wanting to limit people's creativity. For example, Luthier's, I would say, is a, you know, a part of East Hampton's vibrance. They don't serve food. So, you know, if they weren't allowed to have a liquor license, that, you know, they don't serve food. So, and then, who knows? Sky's the limit. There could be other things, like a pool hall or other places that might not serve food, but would still be more viable if they had access to a tool like this.
Okay, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
If there's anyone else from the public who would like to address the council concerning this, just come to the podium and state your name and address, please.
Thank you, I'll be brief. Steve Robinson, Robinson Properties. I live in Florence, but I own a lot of property in East Hampton. I recently purchased the building on the corner of School Street and Union, where the razor's edge. Extensive renovations in the building, very expensive, and I've had two restaurants all set to go. Called the mayor's office, no go, no liquor license. They backed out. We've got Parsons Place, Parsons Village, the Cottage Street Apartments, this influx of people. The arts department's going crazy. I mean, there's all these people coming in. I bought this building in April 2014. I've been asking people on the street since that day. Nine out of 10 people say they want to see more food. My tenants, I have about 75 tenants in East Hampton, they go to North Hampton. It's that simple. It's something we need. You know, I got out of North Hampton for property management, and I moved everything over to here, and I love this town, but there's missed, it's missing something. And that's what everybody's telling me.
Thank you.
So that's it.
Great. Thank you. Does anyone else from the public who would like to address the council concerning this topic?
Okay, Counsel Durbin.
Counsel Smith. Remember, I too am recusing myself from the vote because I'm white folk in the business in the mills, and that's one of our catch areas.
Okay, so, moving to accept an act which would authorize the city of East Hampton to grant eight additional licenses for the sale of all alcoholic beverages to be drunk on the premises.
Second.
Barb, is that whole motion ever read?
I think that's good.
Okay. Okay, so there's a motion of second, additional discussion here. Counsel Riss.
Just want to say, I appreciate what everybody said. I especially appreciate the Youth Coalition and their concerns, and I would like to pursue with the president's also doing it, these regulations, because I think they're valuable. I don't know how they can be. The licensing board has to use them, whether we can enforce, ask them to do it, or whether they have to do it themselves, but I like them. I like what they set as standards for our licenses. But I also think this is a business-friendly idea, and I think we should do it, because as the man said, there is a lot of people coming to this town for arts community, our arts events, its economic development, and I believe the vast majority of these will be used to upgrade establishments that are now beer and wine, and I also believe they will be used to establish new restaurants. So I think this food is going to be the vast, a lot of them. But I agree with Counselor Durbin and the committee, when they said they want it to be creative, they want it to not limit them to just restaurants, and I agree with that as well. Thank you.
Counsel Hayes.
I wanted to speak to this draft that we just received. I think this would need to be fully vetted in public hearing to look at. There's some stuff that...
The licensing board.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, I just didn't, you had said, like, we should take it, like, whole plot, but I think that really needs to get looked at.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I want it to be looked at.
It's a great start, yeah. There's no comments or questions? Okay, Counsel Reagan.
I guess I'm having a little problem, and I had a problem at the last meeting with all eight being full liquor licenses. I just think that, and I understand what a lot of the counselors are saying and the public's saying, that a lot of the, probably, the wine and malt licenses may go to full licenses, but is that necessarily a bad thing, that maybe we at least keep a couple? I know at one time last meeting, Counsel Riss was looking for six and two, and there was some other talk. And I just, eight just seems to me like a little bit of, we're not sure, I mean, everyone's speculating, and I just don't see why we can't have some of these remain as wine and malt. I just think, me personally, eight full licenses all being thrown, you know, we already have, I think the list is over 40 establishments that serve liquor, and I'm not saying there isn't a need, and certainly I think business, and I agree with Salem, you know, you don't want to limit someone, but I do think all liquor licenses do set up for just a bar situation as opposed to wine and beer. That's, nobody's going to open just a bar with wine and beer. They're going to open up, you know, Luther's is a little different. Luther's also big on entertainment, so that's a little bit different. But I just, I would like to see us at least keep some of the...
Hey, Counsel Smith.
There are a couple of things I want to respond, because that was my concern at the last, last City Council, was that it seemed to be more just numbers being thrown out. At the ordinance committee meeting, when the mayor came to talk to us, she was very specific with how many of the restaurants who had the wine and malt liquor licenses and their desire to have more. We looked at it from a cost perspective. I asked if there was a reason that someone would go over, go for a wine and malt license over a full liquor license due to the cost. Just to be transparent about that, it's about a $500, not even a $500 difference. So, my concern was that we would be setting up a two-tier system based on availability and the cost. When we looked at the number of restaurants who currently have the wine and malt licenses, and the fact that they got them at a time when there were no full licenses available, rather than what I keep hearing talked about, that some restaurants seem to prefer only a wine and malt license. I'm not seeing that evidence, that there are a number of restaurants that would prefer to only have wine and beer available. So, my rationale, being on the ordinance committee with upping that to eight, was just that, to provide more access, to not create an unnecessary competition tier based on what we're doing now, and that even with that, we would still have some wine and malt licenses coming back. But to create all eight would just create more vibrancy in new businesses coming in, and their, what do I say, their likelihood of wanting to come to East Hampton if we had the eight. And that really was something we vetted out in the ordinance, and I feel much more comfortable with the eight as a number than six and two, simply because it doesn't feel arbitrary to me.
Counsel Durbin.
And just one other, you know, just a thought. You know, say someone wanted to come open a fancy wine and tapas bar or something, there'd be nothing to preclude them from just doing fancy wines. You know, so they wouldn't, they might have a full license, but they wouldn't necessarily have to use it.
Right.
Counsel Gooding.
I've been on the board for a long time, so this all started way back when. I think it was Log Cabin that approached us when they did their addition onto the Log Cabin, and they built their new addition in East Hampton, and they had to come to East Hampton to get an alcoholic license for them to be able to serve alcohol in the new addition. We had no licenses, so they were the first ones to go to the Senate after we voted on it, to get that over the license, license. And when I'm looking at the list, some of these things that are on the list are, some of these licenses belong to private clubs that some people don't have access to because they are private, and different things like that. So, I'm absolutely in favor of the eight licenses for the all alcohol, and I think Salem makes an excellent point in that they don't have to use them as all alcohol. It's whatever the business is that's coming in. But I'm going to defer to what Casey had to say, and Casey, he's a perfect example of the bureaucracy that was all, all about this, from beginning to end. He's been through it on both sides, and I think Casey made a very valid point. When we've got a successful restaurateur standing up here saying, this is the thing to do, it would have been very helpful for me when I was starting out, and it probably would have saved me a whole lot of money when I was starting out. So, I'm just, I'm for it, and I don't see why we would not want to welcome businesses in when we have a, we have a new person that's investing into East Hampton, investing into our properties, saying, you know, I had a couple people contact me, they wanted to open restaurants, and they couldn't. They didn't, because there were no liquor licenses available, so.
Did I see your hand?
Yes. I've given this a lot of thought, and I certainly want to be supportive of businesses, because that's what drives our economy and keeps our city vibrant and brings in new ideas and new people. But on the other hand, there's a process, and we've had a process of this over-the-quota licenses. Okay, regular licenses based on population, now some over the quota. The Log Cabin was our first example, and a good one. But we had, we had Galaxy, we had the Art Bar, we had Popcorn Noir.
Yeah, it's crazy.
And it happened one at a time, and yes, there was some time that we had to reflect and to think about the process. And I guess the City Council is not the licensing board. The licensing board is an appointed body. We're the elected bodies. So, that means where does the public go if they have concerns about the direction we're going, and how do we balance all the interests of the businesses and the public at the same time to the best way? I'm not sure that an appointed authority or body or board is the right way that the public has the most opportunity to interact with us, to be sure that all the interests are considered. Not everybody might be happy with a new bar across the street from where they live. And I think the public has a right to expect us to look at that. So do we need eight new licenses? I'm not so sure. I guess my approach would be to move more cautiously and to approve some licenses. I certainly feel strongly to tie most, if not all, of those licenses to restaurants, but I understand Counselor Durbin's position, that there may be certain creative ways, so I certainly would be willing to say some percentage, but not all the licenses. I'm not so sure we should remove the elected body from the process in such a universal way. If we use the, I recall the last time you used the example of Hadley, and there were 12 licenses that were en masse approved over the quota in the town of Hadley. We're not Hadley, we're East Hampton. What's the difference? They have a central corridor where probably most of the licenses are going to be used. That corridor is Route 9. Most of the residences aren't in touch with Route 9. Here, we have more places that kind of, we have neighborhoods in with, across from the mills. We're a different city. So I think the public has a right to have the elected body be involved. So, I have several reservations. I also am not sure if I should abstain from voting, because my daughter works in the industry. She's a bartender in town. So, I'm not sure how that is. That being said, certainly happy to entertain discussion on those matters.
Any more discussion? We have a motion and a second on the table, so I guess if there's any more discussion, then it will just be called a vote. Counsel Hayes.
I was, I was just going to say, I mean, I spoke to the State Ethics Commission at length, you know, about a few things. The impression that I got, which is why I have to recuse myself, is that I don't, I don't know if that would be something that you would have to worry about, but it was specifically for me, because I am directly employed and could be employed and have been employed by people who have liquor licenses. So that's why I was knocked off.
Any more comments, Counsel Durbin?
Just a quick one, to kind of follow up on JP. You know, I am not going to vote, because we did, you know, identify certain areas that should gain preference, and, you know, the mills being one of them. So since I opened a business there recently, that is why I'm recusing myself from this vote. However, I do think, you know, it's pretty telling when we have property owners in the city coming to us and saying that they have people chomping on the bit to come into their spaces, and that the only thing that's keeping them is the lack of a license. And I think it's irresponsible on our part, and I wish I could vote, to hinder that. And I don't think we're relinquishing any of our power. We've approved six of these. And, you know, I think that what we're doing is we're creating an environment that's conducive to starting a business without the worry of maybe not getting a liquor license. And, you know, if most restaurants go under in two years, guaranteed, if they don't have a liquor license, they're not going to make it one. So I would say that our responsibility is to the citizens of East Hampton, and the market will drive whether they choose to support businesses or not. And, you know, and I think that's an important point, so that's all I have to say.
Counsel Gooding.
Thank you, Mr. President. To answer the concerns, some of the concerns that Counsel Kozinski has, we are the appointing board to the Liquor Commission. We appoint them to that committee. They answer ultimately to us, whether we reappoint them or not, when their terms are up. Okay? That's first of all. But second of all, from everything I've heard from people I've spoken to that have gone in front of our licensing board, they are very strict, they're very considerate, they're all people that live in the city, they have the utmost respect for neighborhoods, for our business people, and they're, and they're very thorough, is from what I'm hearing. Casey said it himself. They vet you out thoroughly, and we don't micromanage our boards. So, we, when we appoint people to our boards, I expect our boards to act in an appropriate manner to all of the citizens, as they are an extension of us in some way to the public. So I guess I don't share your concerns about the public not being able to have anywhere to go or to express whatever concerns that they have. They know they can always come to us during public speak, and they know that they can go to the mayor. So, and I think, I think that that concern, you know, it's a good concern, and I think that it's something that we should think about, but I don't think that it should be the overlaying reason why we wouldn't go ahead with, you know, doing the full eight licenses and just going forward with it. So that's just my own opinion, so. And I think Counsel Riss maybe just looked up a rule as to how many votes we were going to need.
No, you need five votes.
We need five votes.
That's not what I'm looking at.
Counsel Hayes, did you?
Well, I mean, I went to the Liquor Licensing Board meeting on Monday, and they actually did hand down an offense, a verbal warning to an individual, but they did it without making a motion or making a vote. And I don't know if that's right or not. Like, you know, I asked Counsel Riss if that was something that they could do or couldn't do, but, and just to look into it, but I just, does, does the liquor license follow all the rules? I'm not sure.
They have state criteria.
I'm not sure, again, I don't know if they have to, have to follow Robert's rules, but somebody look into it. Any additional comments, questions? No? So there's a motion of second, so do we need a roll call?
Question.
Okay, will there be a roll call on this, please?
Dan Hagan.
I'll pass.
Oh, right. Oh, actually, I started. Oh, it doesn't matter. Jen, well, Jen Hayes.
I'm going to abstain.
Yeah. JP Kozinski.
I will abstain.
Joe McCoy.
Four, yes. I'm sorry.
Dan Riss.
Yes.
Tamara Smith.
Yes.
Joy Winnie.
Yes.
Yes.
Here. Dan Hagan.
My inclination is to vote no, but I don't feel I could hold up the city. I think it's a big step, so I will vote yes, just so the pass.
We've got five in favor, motion passes.
Thank you.
Mr. President? Yes? I'm on a time crunch, so I would appreciate if we could move to the next item. Yes. So, the next item we have is the zoning map amendments, which was something that ordinance, something we worked closely with the Planning Board with, and our city planners here, I see. And so, what this basically was, was an attempt to take the old zoning map, which was hand-drawn, and it was the last approved in 1995, and create a new digital-based GIS zoning map that was accurate. It did not have, basically, sharpie lines running through our zoning map. And so, this process was identifying areas that were maybe out of alignment, not congruent, and bringing those back into alignment to what we could suppose the original intent of the zoning was. There was a couple of areas that were under question, and we went through all of those areas, and with the Planning Board, we came to agreement on all of those areas, except for one, which we handled at our last meeting, which was on October 28th, where it was brought to our attention that new maps surfaced, and there was an area on Highland Ave that was unclear of where the zoning line should go. We ended up agreeing that the zoning line should go 300 feet from the center line of North Hampton Street. And so, I'd be happy to answer questions, but I do have 15 seventh-and-eighth graders waiting for me to start tryouts pretty soon, so.
Counselor. Just a question. In this process, are we establishing any new zoning?
No.
So, we are, through your research, the Planning Director's research, establishing what we feel is the zoning that town meeting, council, all of the legislative actions that have occurred have put down, but didn't properly document, shall we say, didn't properly map?
It was, there were inconsistencies, because some maps were drawn some way, and some maps were drawn another way, and they were all basically drawn in sharpie.
So, this gives us what we feel is a very accurate zoning map, that does not change any zoning legislatively, but as best we can establishes it in a very good way. And I'm assuming, of course, that anything that was questionable, the landowners and call, like when Mr. Gall was there the other night, were asked about it. I'm sure they were researched, and to make sure that they're not going to be surprised at anything from this, correct?
That is absolutely correct. And in fact, I felt like there was a couple of points where we should have gone a little further, because there was known issues, and I thought, "Well, we're working on this right now, let's fix those issues." But because of the process, we did not, we did not go through and do that, because of, we were already in the notification process that had already gone out, so we'll probably be back to this soon enough.
So, well, that leads me to my last question. This does not preclude that if a mistake was made after maybe Jessica finds out, or you find out, and some landlord comes forward and says, "Look, I have evidence," like Mr. Gall did, "that this zoning may be incorrect." This does not preclude that, because we're not making a legislative action that changes any zoning. We're simply establishing this as a map that gives us, to the best of everybody's ability, the correct zoning map, and does not necessarily preclude any change that can be documented and researched that should have occurred.
Exactly.
Correct?
Yes.
Okay, good, then I'm happy with it.
Counselor Smith?
I'd like to clarify that even further. The maps that we literally looked at are maps that go all the way back to the early 1900s, and when you think about technology, and even on this map, how much of a finer line you can create with computers versus markers. And we literally had the, I don't know the technical name for it, but it was a ruler with three sides, and you could look at the tenth of an inch to...
It's called a scale.
Yeah. And not my specialty. But you really could see the clarity of why we need this, and also, you could see the blips along the way from map to map, where there was any sort of confusion, and then the later maps. So, we really vetted it out, and we really looked at this at such a level of detail, and it really was with the residents and the landowners present to really give their opinion, and I really appreciated the dialogue that occurred throughout the meetings.
I just wanted to compliment the committee, and especially Jessica and the Planning Board for getting this done. Having done a lot of CAD design myself, computerated design, now you can blow this up to any scale you want.
Right.
And see it directly, like they were doing with the Highland Avenue issue, and be very accurate as to what you're getting, as opposed to looking at a map where a sharpie line is so thick, and it's supposed to represent 200 feet. This is excellent. This gives us the modern way to establish, basically, landlines and zoning lines. I'm very happy that you've done this. Thank you.
So, big public hearing, city planner, do you want to make any comments, or is it...
Just one clarification. From the legislative standpoint, that this is the official zoning document for the city. The assessors' property cards are not the official zoning. This map is our official zoning. So, what you were doing tonight is voting on the official zoning map for the city of East Hampton, which has not been voted on since 1995. So, I just want to clarify that what you're taking is a legislative action, as required under Mass General Law, Chapter 48, so.
Well, that leads me to ask, if you find out that a mistake's been made, and I hope not.
I hope not.
Then we have to do a legislative act to change that. We don't have to go back to this committee.
I think we would.
After you've investigated it, and said, "Well, we should have zoned this property, HB, because it's not in the right place, and it's been proven that it should be."
I think...
Then, once we establish this, we do have to have that process.
Yes.
Which doesn't bother me, but I want...
Yes, we would.
That's what you're saying.
Yes, we would have to, we would have to go through the proper public hearing process through the Planning Board, through the ordinance subcommittee. If the changes were provided, and there's documentation, then yes, but it would have to go through the proper process, and I feel like, you know, we've spent six months on this.
Good.
The Planning Board and ordinance held three public meetings on their own, ordinance held additional public hearings on this. I feel like this has been a well-vetted project, so I really hope there are no errors on this, because I feel like we've really looked at it very closely.
You mentioned assessors' cards. So, if they're not conforming to this, they have to be changed.
Correct. And we've started preliminary, as the areas that we found, there were 10 parcels that needed to be incorporated that were zoning changes that the council took since 1995, and then there were 11 inconsistencies that we wanted to clarify, and that's what we basically focused on during the public hearing process. We did find in our analysis that there are some errors in some of the assessors' cards. We started to compile lists, but quite frankly, I feel like it's the responsibility of the Assessors Department to really sort of vet and make sure that everything is accurate. So, we've started the process based on what we can find, but, you know, we would need to work with them to make sure that we've got everything up to date, and everything's accurate. And I'm hoping that CAI Technologies, who's our, the computer consulting group that manages the online assessors database that's online, and has developed the map for us, will be able to look at that, knowing that the zoning is now up to date, going to be accurate, that they can do that analysis as part of their annual review, so.
Excellent.
Thank you.
I just... Is it for her? Yeah, it really wasn't a question, it was a...
I'm sorry. Just another question for you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's mainly a compliment. It isn't easy to take on the problems of a community, and maybe possible errors or concerns, or a misdrawn line, or whatever the issues are, so it's very difficult. And to hear that you've had a six-month process of vetting it, that the public's been notified, that everyone has had a chance to bring forward what information they had to the committees, makes me feel comfortable in voting on the map today. So, thank you very much.
Is there anyone else from the public who would like to comment on this zoning change or clarification? Okay, so, Counselor...
So, before I read the motion, I would like to just read something that Counselor Hagan gave to me, just to clarify the Highland Ave. So, in accepting the revised zoning map dated November 2nd, 2015, should be noted that while the digital map represents the general boundaries, it's intended the City Council to limit the highway district to any landlot or portion of a lot, fronting Highland Avenue to no more than 300 feet from the line, the center line of North Hampton Street, which is what we agreed upon at our previous hearing. So, I just wanted to state that.
City Planner, do I see a nod from you as well on that? Did you hear it?
For me?
Yeah.
Looking at me? Yes.
Okay.
So, this map reflects that?
This map reflects it.
Yes.
Yes, it does.
That's what we're voting on, this map?
Yes.
If I could just comment, the reason I wanted that added is the intent of the council, as we know, this last map was 20 years in the making, and I just wanted to, you know, obviously, this is always kind of a contentious area of town, and if someone goes to develop, whether it's next week, or five years, or 10 years from now, it'll be the intent of the council was that, and I know a digital map, depending on the road could be changed and everything, that what was found in the record was 300 feet, and that's what it is, and when they go to develop it, it has to be 300 feet on.
Okay.
Okay.
I move to amend the official East Hampton zoning map to incorporate approved amendments since the 1995 map, and clarify the boundaries, inconsistencies at multiple locations as approved by the Planning Board and the ordinance subcommittee.
Second. We have a motion, a second, for the approval of the zoning map, so any additional comments or discussion?
Just wanted to say that the ordinance recommendation was three to zero.
Okay. Thank you. So, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, abstain? Motion passes.
Next one.
Thank you. And I'm going to...
Joy, your tryouts.
Bye.
So, I guess we can go back up against Counselor...
I already got it.
Counselor Hayes, if you would like to do your telephone poll.
Sure. The Public Safety Committee looked at a utility petition to put some wires in conduit underneath on Brook Street, and also to redo a pole location on Brook Street as well, because the span was too long. They came to the meeting, they explained everything. We all took a ride up and down Brook Street to take a look at this, to make sure it wasn't in front of anybody's view from their window or anything, and it looks like the changes they want to make are going to be in keeping with the neighborhood, so. We voted three to nothing to accept this as is.
Okay.
Does anybody have any questions about that?
Anyone from the public, or Eversource, or Verizon?
Nothing clears a room like telephone poles.
So, I guess there is...
I did have a question for clarification.
Sure.
Someone had asked me whether or not this was eventually going to be to ready the street for files through Verizon, and just wondering if...
That is not my understanding.
Okay.
But that would have to be directed at files themselves to see what plans they have, if any, for East Hampton.
Okay.
This was strictly through Verizon, so I'm just not sure.
Yeah, and this is because, even if you drive down there, you'll see that, because the poles are so far apart, the wire is really droopy, so they want to put that pole in the middle so that they can get those wires up, and in a secure location where they belong, so.
Anything else?
No, I guess we'll take a motion then.
Okay. So, I actually have two motions, because one's a conduit, and one is a telephone pole. So, we'll do the conduit first, then. I move that the City Council approve the placement of one four-inch conduit on Brook Street, beginning at pole T.8, located on the westerly side of Brook Street, and then running in a northerly direction along the westerly side of Brook Street, at a distance of approximately 419 feet, to pole T.10, located on the westerly side of Brook Street.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, for the Brook Street... I'm sorry, did you read the pole or the conduit?
Conduit.
Okay, fine. Okay, any additional comments or discussion?
When alphabetically.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, abstain? Motion passes.
Thank you all. And the pole motion. I move that the City Council approve the placement of one jointly-owned pole, number T.1 1/2 slash E.2, on the westerly side of Brook Street, at a point approximately 340 feet northerly from the center line of Hendrick Street.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, for the Brook Street pole location. Additional comments or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, abstain? Motion passes.
Thus concludes the public hearings for Public Safety.
Thank you. Finance.
Our first public hearing tonight, and I apologize to our, one of our newer employees that, our meetings usually don't go that long, Laurie, so we did take up, over a couple of meetings, the tax classification, and being a long night, certainly I'll entertain any questions from the counselors, but we've left matters as they stand to a one-rate classification. There's not going to be a difference between business. If the new assessor would like to get up and just make any comments about the reasoning, or the board member, I know there's a board member out here also, if not, I mean, it's not me in charge. I don't know if the counselors have questions, I mean, maybe they don't, and as I said, the later you get, the less questions there are.
There is a plus. Yeah, so, are there any questions concerning the tax rate for the assessor? That was good. Oh, sorry, Counselor Winnie.
The recap, everything went fine. We're all on schedule.
We are.
Awesome. Can you just really quickly explain why we, as a city, normally vote, and I have always voted for the last 20 years, to keep the tax rate for everybody the same, as opposed to going too tiered?
Because you really wouldn't be helping the residential homeowner that much, because of the amount of commercial that you have, even though, you know, it's more than what I was used to. It's still, they say, unless you have like 25% commercial, and you only have 12, that it doesn't help. So, the homeowner, or the residential owner, excuse me, would only be saving a couple hundred dollars max a year, whereas the commercial or industrial would be paying like over $3,000 more a year. So, it kind of doesn't really balance out, because you're not getting more money, you're just shifting it around. So, you're still getting the same tax dollar, but it's just shifted to different people, so I don't know if that answers you, or...
No, it does, because, you know, people ask me, "Why aren't you charging the businesses more than us, tax-wise?" So, it kind of gives them a little bit of knowledge as to why...
Yeah, they're not really going to be saving anything as a residential owner.
Okay, thank you.
Just a quick, Laurie, on your sheet here, just for clarification of what Counselor Winnie's talking about, we're currently, if I have the numbers right, we're 86.8% residential, and between commercial and industrial, right around 10%. So, using your figure of a 20%, we're, while we keep encouraging business, maybe someday we'll get there, but I think right now, we're still in that zone where we'd probably want to... Thank you.
Counselor Winnie, I just wanted to say something. We were talking about the split things. One of the tax things...
Yeah, I'm sorry. Peter Davies, I'm on the Board of Assessors.
When we have chapter land, which we do have a good amount in this town, part of the advantage is that you don't get taxed into full amount. If we did split the commercial, they would all be taxed on a commercial rate, which is going to bring the rate up higher, so it kind of takes all of the, you know, sense out of doing that. So, that's another reason for the commercial.
Thank you.
Any other questions here? Any more questions for the principal assessor? No? Okay, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah, anyone else from the public? We lost all our public. Yeah, there's a public. Okay, so, Counselor Hagan.
I'll make the following motion. I move that the city of East Hampton set a factor of 1.000 for the fiscal year 2016 tax rate, keeping the single tax rate for all classes of property, and do not grant an open space discount, nor a residential exemption, nor a small commercial exemption, as recommended by the Board of Assessors.
Second.
A motion, a second, for, excuse me, setting the new...
Easy.
I'm sorry, I lost my place. Tax rate classification for 2016. Any additional comments, Counselor Rist?
Just a quick compliment to our new assessor and the Board of Assessors. We received, and the Finance Committee and all the counselors received, good information. I don't remember getting this detail of information on our, the amount of space, you know, the allocations, the suballocations, the exemptions, et cetera, the recap statistics. This is good data. Thank you. I know you think you're just doing your job, but it isn't often that we get the kind of data we need to make informed decisions. Thank you very much.
Okay, so, there is a motion, a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, abstain? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Counselor Hagan, please.
Moving on to our supplemental appropriation public hearings, the first item, and I'll do a second reading, and I believe Mr. Kupczynski's here to address all of these, but the first one is the supplemental appropriation dated October 1st. Request is hereby made for approval of the following appropriation. The amount requested is $30,000. Do you appropriate it from the enterprise retained earnings... Amount requested is $30,000 to be appropriated from the enterprise retained earnings in that amount and appropriated to the water enterprise capital. The amount requested would be used for the following purpose, to provide funds for the replacement of a 3/4-ton pickup truck. And I guess I'd call in Mr. Pipchinsky to explain the need for this particular, I think there's three trucks tonight, but this is the first one.
He still is not here.
Good evening.
Everything you're going to hear tonight, we're going to be talking about a vehicle shuffled. Everything's going to get shuffled on down to another department, and that's exactly what's happening here. We've got, this vehicle is the frontline vehicle in the water department. It's still got some life left to it, but if we leave it as a frontline vehicle, you're going to cut that life in half. So if we get a new vehicle, move this to secondary use in the water department, and then one of the old police cruisers that has made the rounds will be coming back to this building for use by the inspectors. So the new vehicle takes over as vehicle number one, service vehicle in the water department. That vehicle goes to a secondary role and the police cruiser that's in the water department now that's in the secondary role will actually come back here. So vehicles are being shuffled around.
Just, and you can probably answer this first for all of them, Joe, just to get it out of the way. There was some concerns by councilors going back to our fuel economy. And I know that when you deal with, it was brought up and you answered it, and when you deal with large pickups, there's only a limit of what you can get for fuel mileage. And there was also the mention of flex fuel, which I don't believe we have the capacity for, and you don't want to go down the road to diesel. I'm not trying to answer them for you, but...
You're absolutely correct. We don't have the capability of storing or purchasing flex fuel. And these type of vehicles, to use a diesel, just isn't conducive to it. We're better off with a gas vehicle.
Councilor Winnie?
This one doesn't have a plow?
No, this one doesn't have a plow. This one is just a service vehicle that responds to water breaks, meter installations, daily stuff.
Okay.
Okay, any additional questions?
So, sorry. So this request says that the, an old police cruiser will be reassigned to the municipal building for use by inspectors? Wasn't that the role of the Ford Focus that you guys got?
No, the Ford Focus is down at the water department for use by the water meter reader.
This is going to be the assessors', if I remember what the mayor said, this would be used primarily with the assessors' office to go out on their inspections because currently they often have to use their own vehicle.
And we pay a mileage.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay. I don't see anyone from the public, so, Councilor Winst?
Just to inform the councilors, we debated this issue at length and the mayor brought up a good point. We do not have enough vehicles for all of our regular inspections and visits for the water department, for inspectors. Often, the mayor's vehicle, which she needs quite often, is used by many of these people. So by bumping these vehicles down to other departments, they get older vehicles which aren't as used as often as they were in the public works department, but they are available now. And it will make it much more efficient for our employees to do their jobs. So we were very happy to hear that, at least I was in the Finance Committee. Thank you.
Okay. Any other additional questions? Okay, I guess, Councilor Hagan.
I'll make the following motion, that the East Hampton City Council approve the supplemental appropriation of $30,000 from the enterprise retained earnings and it be appropriated to the water capital for the purpose of replacement of a 3/4-ton pickup truck.
Okay, a motion, a second, for supplemental appropriation of $30,000 for the replacement of a 4-ton pickup truck. Any last discussion or comments? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion passes.
Our second public hearing tonight, again, our second supplemental appropriation of the public hearing tonight, is, and I'll do a second reading, also dated October 1st, 2015. Request is hereby made for approval of the following appropriation. The amount requested is $46,200 to be appropriated from free cash in the amount of $34,188 in enterprise retained earnings in the amount of $12,012 and appropriated to the motor repair capital in that amount, $46,200. And again, I'll let Mr. Pipchinsky, I think this is a vehicle that's going to be used by the motor repair division, which repairs all our trucks or all our vehicles, really, I mean, or the ones that are not warranty.
That's correct. Right now, it's a vehicle that's here, is a 2002. It's got 78,000 miles on it. It's two-wheel drive. It's a decent truck, but a couple of things. It's not quite suited for what they need it for. Doesn't have a utility body on it, so anytime he's got to go out and work on a piece of equipment that's out on the road during the day or in a snowstorm, he's got to throw the tools on the back of the truck and go. The new truck will have a utility body on it where he can have tools in there, ready to go when he needs to go. This vehicle that he's using now will get reassigned to the Parks Department. Parks Department is looking for a two-wheel-drive vehicle, two-wheel-drive pickup, and this is the perfect fit for that. So again, we're doing the shuffle, we're moving it to the Parks Department. If it stayed in this department, we might get another three or four years out of it. If it goes to the Parks Department, we'll probably get five or six years out of it.
Okay, Councilor Hayes?
So it's just missing a toolbox?
No, it's not a four-wheel drive to start with. So in a snowstorm, he has a hard time getting to a snowplow out in Loudville Road that is broke down with a two-wheel-drive vehicle. With a four-wheel drive, it's obviously easier to do that. So it's not quite the vehicle that we need for equipment repair.
And Councilor Winnie?
These are all coming off the state bid list, MHQ.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Thank you.
Oh no, just one other question because when we were talking about that, I know there's also some new midsize pickup trucks that can be four-wheel drive, and you did look a little into those, but you said some of those are going for, because there's such a, there's a lot of full-size trucks out there, but some of the midsize are not just getting out there that they're not, there's not that much of a significant savings.
Chevrolet offers deep discounts on the half-ton pickup, but they do not offer any discounts on the midsize pickup. So the smaller truck is actually more expensive than the half-ton pickup.
Right. Yeah.
Any additional questions or comments? Okay, Councilor Hagan?
I'll make the following motion, that the East Hampton City Council approve the supplemental appropriation of $46,200 and that we appropriate it from free cash in the amount of $34,188 and enterprise retained earnings in the amount of $12,012 and we appropriate it to the motor repair capital in that amount, $46,200, for the purpose of providing funds for replacement of a 3/4-ton pickup with a four-wheel, with a four-wheel, excuse me, a four-by-four, one-ton pickup.
Second. A motion, a second, for supplemental appropriation of $46,200 for the 3/4-ton pickup. Any additional comments, questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion passes.
Our third supplemental appropriation, I'll do a second reading, dated October 1st, 2015. Request is hereby made for approval of the following appropriation. The amount requested, $47,000, to be appropriated from enterprise retained earnings in that amount, $47,000, and appropriated to water enterprise capital, $47,000. The amount requested would be used for the following purpose, to provide funds for replacement of a 3/4-ton pickup truck. And I believe this one will have a plow, Councilor Winnie, but I'll let...
Right. This one will. What happened is, we had a half-ton pickup down in the wastewater treatment plant that was 1992. We actually bought it used. And it finally gave up the ghost. The mechanics put it on the lift and said, "It's just too rotten." Brake lines, everything was just all rotten, and they took it off the road for safety reasons. Well, they're one vehicle short down at the wastewater treatment plant. Again, we have a water department vehicle with a plow on it that we want to take and move it down to the wastewater treatment plant. They can use that and also use that vehicle to plow their yards and their yard, their pump stations and everything, and replace it with a new vehicle for the water department with a plow, again, to plow all the water pump stations with. So again, we're, we think we're moving vehicles to places where they're going to get more life out of them and it's going to be a benefit to all departments.
Okay, any additional questions for, say, Councilor Hagan?
I'll make the following motion, that the East Hampton City Council approve the supplemental appropriation of $47,000, appropriated from the enterprise retained earnings and appropriated to the water capital for the purpose of providing funds for a replacement 3/4-ton pickup.
Second. A motion, a second, of supplemental appropriation of $47,000 for the replacement of a 3/4-ton pickup. Additional comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion passes.
Our final supplemental appropriation tonight is a little different. This one is a, and I'll do a second reading, it's dated October 1st, 2015. Request is hereby made for approval of the following appropriation. The amount requested is $68,000 and is to be appropriated from enterprise retained earnings in that amount, $68,000, and appropriated to the water enterprise capital project, $68,000. The amount requested would be used for the following purpose, to provide funds for the design of a replacement for a 12-inch cast iron water main under the Ferry Street Bridge. And I guess I'll let Mr. Pipchinsky speak to this. I guess there's a pipe that's starting to leak and it runs under the road, and this is just for the survey or just for the design.
This is just for the design. And the long and the short of it is, is that there's a water main underneath that bridge. It's held up underneath by hangers. Well, the hangers have corroded over the years and in some places, the hangers are missing. And we've noticed that the pipe is starting to sag and we might even have a drip here or there on some of the pipe joints. We've got to start the design to replace that. We don't know what the construction cost could be. It could be $250,000. But the design has to be done by a structural engineer because it's under a bridge, and it has to be approved by Mass. DOT because it's under a bridge. So it's not as simple as just burying the pipe in the ground. There's a lot more to it. So we've got to get the design, get it approved by Mass. DOT before we even know what the cost is going to be to go ahead with construction. Our plan is that we get the design done this winter and come back in the spring with a figure on what it's going to cost to replace this.
Councilor Winnie?
Was there any thought in taking it out from underneath the bridge with the new design so that it...
Well, that's what this design will tell us, whether it's beneficial to hang it under the bridge, bury it in the water, or actually go over the bridge with it and top, put some insulation. So that's what the engineers are going to tell us, what is the most beneficial way for us to go.
The bridge is Ferry Street, the lower mill pond?
Yes.
Going under to where the old mill, under there?
Yes.
Okay.
Right by Emerald Place.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, any additional questions or comments? Councilor Hagan?
I'll make the following motion, that the East Hampton City Council approve the following supplemental appropriation. The amount requested is $68,000 and it be appropriated from enterprise retained earnings in that amount and appropriated to water enterprise capital project. The amount requested for the following purpose, to provide funds for the design of the replacement of a 12-inch cast iron water main under the Ferry Street Bridge.
Second. A motion, a second, with supplemental appropriation of $68,000 for the place of the cast iron water main on the Ferry Street Bridge. Additional questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I guess I'll entertain, I think we did new business growth, so...
I think a motion to close the public hearing.
Oh, thank you. Okay, motion to close public hearings, all those in favor?
Aye, move the way adjourned.
Second.
Okay, motion, second to adjourn, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. More stuff to sign here.